I am so thrilled to be here on Martin Luther King Day as we celebrate, remember the legacy of a great man, and most importantly, to recommit ourselves to his dream.
He started the dream. Now our children, our future, have to continue the dream.
Seeing the youth participating in the parade is awesome.
Dr. Martin Luther King was a great man. He inspired us today. That's why we have all this great stuff. I'm so glad to be here in L.A., surrounded by all these African-Americans, my culture, and it feels so good. I came all the way from the East Coast just to come here. Wow, it's amazing.
Martin Luther King's legacy was a legacy of equality, of freedom for all people, that everybody was created equal.
He was about peace, justice, love for everybody. He was such a great man. Changed the world. Probably one of the greatest men that ever lived.
MLK Day has been a national holiday since 1986, making this parade a South SoCal tradition that's 35 years old and still going strong. And what do paraders find at the end of that rainbow? A cultural block party that keeps the festivities rolling. Next stop, the Freedom Festival.
This is the Martin Luther King Junior Freedom Fest. It's a great event that we have every year here in La Mer Park. There are booths from all different vendors, artists, there's talent. We have three stages. We also have city booths with our city services. The Department of Cultural Affairs has a booth right here where we are featuring the Vision Theater. As you know, it's being renovated right now, and we have artwork of what the theater will look like on the inside and on the outside. We also have memorabilia. So the theater was built in 1931, so we have the armrests from the actual theater seats that we're giving away to the community as a keepsake.
So the Freedom Festival was really fun. I'm glad I came. It was my first time. I think it's really important for us to have events like this where you can really celebrate who you are.
This kind of festival is great for the community because it brings us together as one, and it gives us time to just kind of commune with one another.
The festival is great. It celebrates the culture of Crenshaw and Black culture in L.A., and I feel like it gives everyone an opportunity to come out, just feel the pulse of the community.
We go from an annual celebration at La Mer Park to a monthly event at the First Street Corridor. We visited the East L.A. Art Walk where the goods and the vendors are all about building community.
East L.A. Art Walk has been happening for the past five years at the corner of First Street and Indiana, and it features local artisans, local crafters, entrepreneurs.
I grew up here in Boyle Heights. My family has a lot of roots here, and it's important because there isn't a lot of vegan options or healthy options here in the community, so it's made it my mission in order to be able to help and educate individuals here as well to... and how to have a healthier lifestyle.
By having the art here in East L.A., first of all, it changes the face of the neighborhood. It shows to the local kids and to the local community that there is an alternative to tagging walls, so hopefully they feel inspired, and this helps youth at risk find a different path.
I just really appreciate the community in East Los for supporting all of us and coming out and talking and being friendly, and I just, I love it so much.
The East L.A. Art Walk begins at the corner of Indiana and First Street. Artists and vendors are waiting for you to pay them a visit every second Sunday, rain or shine. The Madrid Theater in Canoga Park has new tenants. The Bob Baker Marionette Theater offers a fun family experience with no strings attached. Well, maybe a few strings, and I will tell you, having met Bob Baker years ago, this man has left a true legacy behind.
You guys ready for a puppet show?
Yeah!
Today at the Madrid Theater, put on by the Department of Cultural Affairs, we're doing two shows. Bob Baker was a puppeteer. Back when Bob Baker was six years old, this is all the way back in 1930, saw his first puppet show, and then spent the rest of his life creating the Bob Baker Marionette Theater. Puppets have been around since ancient Egypt, if not before the magic that existed 50 years ago, 2,000 years ago, still exists today.
I've been to other puppet shows, but never like this.
My favorite part of the show were the ostriches.
I just really appreciate that we were able to come today and that this is provided by the city. It's a really nice service to the community.
We do shows all year long and all throughout Los Angeles. We have a traveling company that comes out just like this, and we're popping up everywhere. All that information's at BobBakerMarionetteTheater.com. Puppets are for children of all ages, so from two to two plus. Bob used to say, "Be happy, be healthy, and always keep a smile on your face."
Becoming a firefighter is a rigorous process of skill and strength training. Not just anyone can become one. Now imagine how awesome a dog you would have to be to pass all that grueling training. Reporter Sayeda Pagan has the opportunity to meet one of these very special canines.
Good girl. Good girl. Easy, easy.
This is Veia and her owner and handler, L.A. firefighter Margaret Stewart. On this day, they are training for their important and critical job. Veia is one of only two dogs at the Los Angeles Fire Department certified to recover human remains. Veia is deployed about 12 times a year. She's there after a fire, a disaster, and at crime scenes.
She locates human blood, bone, or tissue, which could mean a body that fell victim in a structure fire. It could be in a disaster with a mud flow. It could be any type of scenario.
Veia is well-suited for her job on the human remains detection team. She is widely known for her intelligence, high energy, and hard work.
It doesn't matter what's around her. She's just gonna plow through, up, over, around, to get to what she needs to do to get her toy.
Canine Veia's skills are in demand all over Southern California. Firefighters say her ability to find remains helps to bring closure to grieving families.
In 2016, she's responsible for locating four individuals. It was a family that perished in a structure fire, and no one knew they were there.
Veia's recovery work has earned her accolades from the Los Angeles Fire Department. A few years ago, she and two other dogs became the first non-humans to receive a valor award from the LAFD.
She's established a reputation that she, "We work hard, we're reliable, and we train regularly to maintain that." Show me! Show me! Search!
Firefighter Stewart credits the love and the bond that exists between them for making it all work.
We go everywhere together. She comes to work with me. She's at the station. We go on vacation together. We travel to workshops across the country together. So we're a package deal.
How adorable is she? Oh my gosh, I would love to take her home. Veia is one of several specially trained dogs used by the L.A. Fire Department, and next week, we'll meet one of her coworkers, a canine who is part of the R.S. Counterterrorism Section. The Golden Dragon Parade turns 121. Wow! Local chefs compete to make savory dishes with chocolate, and Wisdom Immersive Art Park opens a new exhibit featuring Samskara. All this and more in Things to Do.
The Chinese Chamber of Commerce of Los Angeles presents the 121st Annual Golden Dragon Parade. With thousands lining the parade route each year, this colorful celebration along North Broadway in Chinatown has become the premier cultural event in the Southern California Asian-American community. Don't miss the 121st Annual Golden Dragon Parade, happening Saturday, February 1st, beginning at 1:00 p.m. For more information, visit lagoldendragonparade.com. Chocolate is the name of the game at the Savory Chocolate Culinary Fight Club. This event is not about creating sweet cupcakes. This cooking contest boasts food of the gods kind of bites. It's refined but translatable to the chocolate lover who wants to experience chocolate in a new way. Get a front row seat to creative deliciousness. The Savory Chocolate Culinary Fight Club drops Friday, January 31st. For details, visit their listing on Gold Star. If you love art, music, VR, and exploring new things, come experience the magic of Samskara, an immersive art and technology exhibition. This multimedia exhibit is a great sanctuary for getting out of your head and realizing the universe around you. Take your friends and get lost together in one or all four interactive domes. Prepare to see tons of captivating visuals and Instagram-worthy pictures at Samskara, happening February 2nd from 6:00 p.m. to midnight. For details, check out their listing on Eventbrite. And that's a look at some things to do.
That's it for this edition. I'm Rasha Goel. From all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can also catch us online at lacityview.org, and we're on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube, so no excuses to miss us. See you next time for more L.A. This Week.
Welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Wednesday, January 29th. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. Madam Clerk, we have a quorum. Let's run through the agenda.
Blumen Filbana, Buscain Ocedio, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Coetz, Krikorian, Lee, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson. Ten members present in the quorum. Madam President.
First, order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. O'Farrell moves, and Mr. Buscain Ocedio seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Rue moves, and Mr. Harris Dawson seconds, next.
Madam President, items one through 10 are items which public hearings have been held. The Economic Development Committee reports for items three and 10 have been posted and circulated for council's consideration.
Okay, members, are there any specials on any of these items? Okay, seeing none. Oh, Mr. Price, go ahead.
Yeah, we're gonna hold, I'm sorry, three, I think. Item three, special?
Item three, special for Mr. Price. Any other specials, members? Seeing none, let's go ahead and vote on these items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
Next.
And Madam President, the ordinances for items four and five will be held over one week to February 5th unless reconsidered with 12 members present.
Okay, without objection.
Items 11 through 18 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are now before us. Are there any cards on any of these items?
Yes, Madam President, there are cards on all items.
Okay, let's go ahead and hold that. Members, you have any specials on these items? Seeing none? What's next?
Madam President, that then takes council back to items called special or general public comment.
Okay, members, let's go ahead and move on to item number three, Mr. Price.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'd like to ask the mayor's appointee, Ms. Carolyn Hull, to come to the table. Ms. Carolyn Hull, come to the table. Answering the call.
The red carpet treatment from Mr. Harris Dawson.
Yesterday, in committee, the... We had an opportunity to hear from Carolyn Hull, a no stranger to our city, and we're excited about the mayor's appointment of her to head EWD. And I'd just like for her to introduce herself to those who are not as familiar with her extensive background, training, and interest in community economic development. Carolyn?
Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. It's an honor to be nominated for the position of General Manager for the Economic and Workforce Development Department for the City of Los Angeles. I'm looking forward to working with each council office, the various city departments, the mayor's office, and other stakeholders to develop and implement inclusive economic development programs and projects which facilitate the retention and creation of living wage jobs. My professional career and education have emphasized economic and financial analyses focused on local and regional economic development policies and projects. In the early portion of my career, I was a senior economist focused on analyzing major metropolitan areas along the Pacific coast. I've been a land use consultant for CBRE. I've held several positions for the former Community Redevelopment Agency for the City of Los Angeles, including being the regional administrator for South L.A. In my most recent position, I've served as the Vice President of Strategic Initiatives and Industry Cluster Development for the Los Angeles County Economic Development Corporation. In all of these positions, I've worked to expand the economy of Los Angeles and the surrounding region in an equitable fashion, and I will continue to do that in my new role, and thank you all very much.
Thank you. Yesterday, Madam President in committee, Councilman Rodriguez and Councilman Busciano and I were unanimous in our support for Ms. Hull, and we urge our colleagues to do the same this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Mr. Buscain Ocedio.
Thank you, Madam President. The reason why, Mr. Price, we were unanimous, because what you see before you, colleagues, is a recommendation from Mayor Garcetti, who has the skills, the knowledge, the ability to lead our city in economic development and workforce development. I'm really excited about this position and this recommendation. You know, yesterday in committee, we talked about the importance of how we deal with federal opportunity zones, as well as the importance of bringing in and diversify our workforce in the City of Los Angeles, whether it's through EIFDs, through CREAs, business tax incentives for investments in targeted areas that are in need of investment, and you had some solid answers. I'm really excited because you bring that fresh perspective, those fresh eyes into our city family in such a critical time where we're moving on our citywide economic development strategies, Carolyn. So really appreciate you saying yes to the mayor and having this body support your efforts because we need you, and I'm really more excited because you know my district well. Just saying for the record. So congratulations. Looking forward to working with you.
And as do I.
Thank you, Mr. Buscain Ocedio. Mr. Harris Dawson.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Price, for leading the committee to bring us a unanimous opinion today about our good friend, our new General Manager for Economic Development. I just have a small story that I can't help but tell because it's the little things to me that matter a lot. Back a long time ago, I don't know, I guess it's been about 15 years ago, a very young executive director came and said, "We want to buy this building. We want to gut it, and we want to completely redo it. It cost about $8 million, and we have about $50,000 in the bank." And Carolyn walked us through the process, day by day, you know, like making us do the checklist every day. And any of you who have been to the Community Coalition now, and you can see the before and after pictures, it's a testament to Carolyn because I can guarantee you, none of us there had any idea what we were doing. But we... she believed in us and believed in the community, and we were able to pull a big project off that I think is one of the shining examples of what economic development can be in communities like South Los Angeles and the other communities that you'll work in. So we're excited to do some more big things in the new role that you'll have, thanks to Mayor Garcetti and the council.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Harris Dawson. Members, let's go ahead and prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Looking forward to it.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and reconsider items four and five. We now have 12 members here. Is vote on reconsideration, item four and five. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
Those items are now before us, members. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, we're moving on to multiple speaker cards. If I call your name, please come up to the podium. Mr. Lynn Moses. Mr. Moses, you're speaking on items 11 through 18 and your general public comment, sir.
Good morning, Ms. Martinez. To the best of my knowledge, Ms. Martinez, you have not apologized to Ms. Autry for insulting her on December 11th. You can do that. Wesson isn't man enough, but you can do that.
Why don't we save that for our generals?
Item number 11. Item number 11, I don't believe anything should be exempt from the California Environment Quality Act at this point. Nothing. No matter what we do, if we start doing everything right, we are going to reach 3 degrees Celsius. Three degrees. That is catastrophic. But yet, we're pedal to the metal, just screwing each other all the way down this...off the cliff. Nothing should be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. You talk about a Green New Deal? Well, this isn't it. You're spending $600,000 per unit in HHH funds, total waste. Well, environmental security is what we need, and not abusing each other. I do have some documents. Officer? On sleazy, marquisey Dawson's fraud.
Please take the documents. Thank you, Mr. Moses.
Officer? Officer? Sorry about that. Thank you. Thank you, officer. I'll go to my public comment now, please.
Go ahead and give Mr. Moses his one minute of general public comment. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Martinez, you can apologize very quickly. You owe Miss Autry an apology for mocking her as she was being removed, kicked out by Herb Wesson so he could praise himself. You went like that as she was being thrown out? Yes, you did. I was standing between you and her. This is another document, officer. The community, as my understanding is, started boycotting the sponsors, the vendors of Destination Crenshaw, Black Business Destruction Gentrification Project, and Wells Fargo Bank has threatened police action against peaceful men, women, and children.
Thank you, Mr. Moses.
Just the beginning, looks like. Dawson.
Thank you, Mr. Moses. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Eric Previn, followed by Antonia Ramirez and Patricia McAllister. Mr. Previn, you're speaking on items 11 through 18 and your general public comment.
Thank you very much. It's Eric Previn from Studio City, and I'd like to show a little admiration for Paul Corretts and Paul Krikorian for getting the 5001 Balboa Firehouse squared away and finally converted also to some kind of different zoning. This has been a long haul. They've been paying a dollar a year or something. It's a great giveaway. I love it. I mean, I think it shows exactly what we do here. We do so well.
So, I'm not sure which agenda item you're on.
Okay, fine. Well, I'm sorry. I don't do them by number, sir, but I'm happy to do them by content. Thank you to that economic development new installation. She's a great leader, and I think she'll do a good job. The job is, of course, finding ways to engage, you know, living wage employees at Honda and other places that are in business with Price. So, I hope that we can find a way to, you know, continue to do that work with all the struggles we have. Like, for example, you know, today we are also facing three separate items at the airport where we have commissioners who are approving extensions of contracts, 625 up to 20 million for CETA, I believe it's called, Information Networking Computing. You say they're out of Atlanta, Georgia. They do a great job. They handle stuff at the airport. But here's the problem. We have set up at our airport and others the same ethos that results in what we're calling congestion pricing at TSA. So, this kind of like weird computerization which favors people who have a little bit more money. It's Blumenfield, it's 15 bucks a month, and you can cut line. And the cost is only 15 a month, which is nothing to someone who's loaded, but to the rest of the folks who actually pay the real cost, we wait, we're late, it's awful, and it's totally inappropriate. It sets up exactly what we don't want, cutting in line. Like with Westfield. I know, you know, they do, they pay a little extra, and then they're able to get all their permits done. So, this kind of a setup is bad. Now, multifamily housing bonds is what we all do, and 50 million is not insubstantial. But my question was for Rue. Oh, there's Wesson. He's back. Oh, that's fantastic. But he's not sitting in for Rue, but Rue's there. Anyway, the point is, is that when we did the waiving of the multifamily bond policy for Buckley School, what did that mean exactly? Because I don't understand. I've always been of the mind that these are simply worth authorizing, there's new liability, new responsibility. So, what are we waiving when we up to, you know, upgrade the residents over there? Now, in terms of the AQMD, what can you say? I mean, we love complying with the AQMD. I know Buscaino is a big leader over there. I believe he is, I'm not sure. And we also have the bike path. Now, here, we have the going right through Studio City, but not really. We have a little workaround. But here, we're looking at, for information, there, one thing we need to know is...
So, I don't think that's item 1118. Is it, Mr. Previn?
No, I disagree. I think it is on the agenda. Do you disagree? We could litigate it, but I think we'd rather go forward with the question of, I think, that we should be disclosing our plans. And when the city is engaging in giving away vacating city property, they need to explain for what and why for.
Mr. Previn, his one minute of general public comment.
Okay, so the one minute of general public comment would be tonight at 6:30 PM. The great Paul Krikorian will be taking the stage with The Challengers. It's in Saticoy Elementary School at 6:30 PM. They've set up an interesting program where you have to...Rick Coco will like this, you have to sign up to go. So, you know, hopefully, that will just be, that's just a formality, and people will be admitted, and hopefully, there'll be questions from the floor. Because there was a suggestion that there will be no questions from the floor, that it's going to be a highly curated, choreographed event. Now, in regards to that, what we've agreed to do at my neighborhood council, and we voted on it last month, is actually hold some open forums. So, this is going to open up to really all of the candidates throughout the county and city who are running for office, including 12 judges, if you can believe it. I mean, that is a...the presumption of regularity about what we're doing is being questioned on that, I'll tell you. But nonetheless, we want to hear from everybody, including the new DA candidates. And I think you know there's a presidential election and primary coming up, Mr. Fable. And so, you're invited as well, sir. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Come on up, Ms. Ramirez. You're speaking on items 11 through 18 and general public comment.
Thank you. I'll start with number 13. We must first find a concrete, innovative way to secure all Wi-Fi and all info networking stations throughout all airports, to secure no hackers or any secret audio and video spyware. And also, let's not forget, pilot safety is a priority. Number 15, Mitchell Farrell and Kern Price, that is a good and healthy start. Hygiene kits, God knows, we, the homeless, need them on a daily basis. I have two requests. First, provide hygiene kits to all homeless outside of Skid Row so we don't have to get robbed, popped, or killed in Skid Row. We also need that bathrooms 24/7. Number 16, wow, Mitchell Farrell and David Rue are actually motivated to do the right thing. Hell, I thought it was only Donald Trump who did the right thing. Wow, I am flabbergasted. Yes, I've been pleading, bitching, moaning shit, and crapping for access to bathrooms 24 hours a day, not only for the homeless and uncivilized homeless assholes, but also for the tourists, travelers, and visitors. And wasn't it Mitchell Farrell who said we need nightlife in LA? And how are you going to provide nightlife without any bathrooms? Why are you going to have more shit all over the streets, and poopoo, and feces, and everything else, not to mention vomit? Number 17, ladies and gentlemen, God bless Cedillo and Weezer, let me start by congratulating our dignified, super hard, strenuous individuals who work in the sanitation department. As a homeless individual, I see how hard these guys really work, and most of them are Latinos. Man, they bust their asses pushing those heavy trash bins loaded with heavy debris and furniture, and God bless them, they sweat night and day, and I just see them, and my heart breaks out for them. And I see the beauty of my Latinos, how they bust their asses pushing those trash bins everywhere. And they are dirty, filthy, but yet, they do with a smile. And every day, I bless them and send them up with prayer.
Ms. Ramirez, you need to get back on the items, ma'am.
Thank you very much. I'll go to public comments.
All right, let's give her one minute. Hold on for just a second. Okay, go ahead, start.
Thank you. I believe that Kobe Bryant and daughter Gigi were deliberately killed by the elite satanic Zionist Jews or Illuminati and/or the Freemason assholes. I have more questions than answers. Was Kobe Bryant unknowingly engaged in humanitarian projects that the Illuminati deemed as a powerful threat? Were they highly jealous of Kobe Bryant's phenomenal success? He was a magnanimous personality, like Princess Diana. Now, why did his pilot get a clearance to fly under low visibility and heavy dense fog, yet the law enforcement pilots were grounded for their safety? And God bless them too, I love them. We understand the pilots did not report any mechanical distress, or maybe did not have time to report the mechanical distress, or he did not want to scare the passengers until it was too late. The pilot was flying at low altitude, surrounded by mountains? Why? Did the pilot encounter wind shears? Did the Illuminati finally sabotage the aircraft with rigged timer and use the Calabasas Canyons, the dense fog, low visibility, steep terrain, and pilot error as a pretext to crash the aircraft deliberately, thereby snuffing Kobe Bryant's life and everyone else aboard? This man truly was beautiful, and God bless his family. May you rest in peace, Kobe and daughter, and everyone aboard. God bless America.
Ms. Ramirez, your time is up. Next speaker is Patricia McAllister, followed by Wayne Ms. McAllister, you're speaking on items 11 through 18 and general public comment.
As you might know, I'm a computer scientist with a degree in computer science, Chicago State University, four year degree. I see that you have these maintenance contracts with SITA for the airport, and they're different contracts with the same company. And here, for five months, you want to give them $626,000 more for a total of $20 million. What's going on here? Why is the same company doing different things? Put it all in one contract, okay? Plus, I want to know how many other companies are you...have you partitioned this airport workout to? We need one or two companies to handle all IT, not 15 in 202530. And I know why you're doing that, so you can get kickbacks from all of them, okay? We're going to break this crap up. Now, here's the deal. I want to know, and Buscaino, I sent you a Freedom of Information request, and I want it, okay? Where is he? I'm going to get that information, take any legal measures I have to to get that information that I sent to Buscaino. He has not responded. Okay, now, item number 18, you want to get some multifamily housing revenue bonds for $50 million for the Hollywood Arts Collective located at 1633 Wilcock Avenue. I'm going to find, I'm going to trace this project. I want to know, from the time you pass this motion for this $50 million, when do you start fixing or constructing this? It's supposed to be 152 units. Based on ADHH, you haven't constructed anything since 2017, okay? I want to know, and I'm going to track this, I'm going to track some of these. This is one of them, okay? Because I see a lot of corruption in this council here. And then, here on number 16, you want 24-hour access to park restrooms in Echo Park. We need restrooms in all the parks, okay? Not just Echo Park, all the parks. And I want more of these where on Skid Row, where my people, 20,000 African Americans with children, and they're not drug addicts. See, we see the people on the street. They're not going to tell you about the 125 shelters where black people are in the shelters. And I talk to people, and they say they're 90% filled with black people, and they're losing their minds in these shelters, the women, because they've been in there for so many years, and they're moving them around to different shelters, okay? They need toilets, and they need all of that throughout the city. Now, also, I've been seeing that when you get these, build these affordable houses, like the one on 88th and Vermont, some of the units, there are only a few affordable units. Most of them are market rate. What's going on? You're building market rate apartments and making 15 apartments affordable? Are you nuts? We...I'm going to fix this mess. This is my calling. I'm glad you took me out of the classroom, because this classroom is bigger. See, I'm a born teacher. Once you took me out of the classroom, I'm still a teacher, and I'm going to teach you today. Now, the Finance Committee, you haven't met in 2019...
Ms. McAllister, you have your one minute of general public comment.
The Finance Committee met two times in 2019. I want every motion that you've done, every communication. I want to know what has been allocated, what has been spent. I'm going to send a Freedom of Information, back it up by legal terminology. If I don't get it, I'll take as high as I have to, the Supreme Court, okay? I want to know, we need to start interviewing a certified public accountant right now. I know some of you may have to go to the penitentiary after they...I want some...after they do the research. See, they're going to go through the books, they're going to find out what's been going on. Some of you may end up in the penitentiary. But we're going to get a CPA up in here, because you are lawyers, you're doing nothing but stealing, okay? Nothing but stealing. And I want to know why Herb Wesson, and we're going to hold him accountable, why he allowed them to cancel these finance meetings in 2019. Madam President, they canceled January 2020, and I want you to tell me why. I'm going to send you a Freedom of Information request, why they canceled.
Thank you, Ms. McAllister. Next speaker, Wayne Spindler. You're also speaking on items 11 through 18 and general public comment.
Good. And before we get started, can the lobbyist over in the corner stop trying to blackmail the council member there to my right?
You need to get back on the items or move on to general public comment.
So, let's talk about this fucking Mike Bonin item, number 11. Look at this, LAX, Los Angeles cocksucker airport. What are we doing, spending money, tear down the airport? Rebuild it. Rebuild it just like John Wayne Airport. John Wayne Airport has excellent flight plans for helicopters, and I encourage LAX to follow the same plan. They really did a good job for Kobe Bryant's flight plan, and I know LAX would like to do the same for the future of flight. And then, we have another fraudulent item on CETA, Information Network Computing. Shit idiot taxing assholes. The CETA plan is a failure, and Eduardo knows it, and he says no good. Then, we get number 14, Conflict of Interest Code for the Harbor Department. Why do we need a conflict of interest? Look at the room here. Bob, Joe, and over here, Kern and Herb can't stop stealing from developers. They're so ethical in our city council. They are so ethical. ethical in our city council, they are so ethical, Fable, you're so ethical. And so, I say we don't need a conflict of interest code. I trust all of you with my taxpayer dollars. I, I trust Paul Krikorian, I trust Jose Weisar. I mean, look at these guys, they're as honest as can be, and Nury knows it. And then we get to number 15, funding emergency measures for Echo Park Lake. Now, see, now, Mitchell Farrell's doing a good job on number 15. Now, you see, I don't walk up here every day and I don't go, "Rah rah rah rah, you're a bunch of rah rah." No, when you do a good job, I want to be the first to say so, so number 15 is an excellent job. Yes, we do need these hygiene needs, thank you, Councilman O'Farrell. See, when, when you do a good job, I'll be up here all day talking just like that, see? Well, when you fuck up, you know what happens. Now, you get to number 16, another good one by Mitchell Farrell, 24-hour access to park restrooms. I can't believe this guy. I'd almost vote for this guy. I mean, this is great. So, yes on item 16, yes. So, now-
Ker, your one minute of general public comment.
We're gonna be losing very soon a great, great icon. We're gonna miss Herb Wesson when he leaves here. Every day, I see him out there in the South Lawn Portico steps, smoking those cigarettes in that tiny little mouth of his, he looks like a cute little nigger lawn jockey, and I'll tell you, he's so cute with the little hands and the little tiny mouth, smoking those $14 packs of cigarettes, I mean, it's just amazing.
So, can we get something that's related to city business, Mr. Spindler?
It's so wonderful. I'm gonna be missing him so much, I know all of you. And then, God forbid, we get Mark Ridley Thomas here to take over the tent, because he's a big killjoy, you know? A big fat fuck like Mark Ridley Thomas, so no on Mark Ridley Thomas, no on Herb Wesson, yes on Holly Mitchell for the board of supervisors. Now, Herb, go out and put a tiny little cigarette in that little nigger mouth of yours.
All right, um, Madam Clerk? Mr. Krikorian?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to take a moment, because we have, uh, folks in the audience who maybe haven't been to a city council meeting before, and I especially want to apologize to, uh, the mom, uh, who is here with her young daughter and was just exposed to Mr. Spindler's abuse of the podium, his daily abuse of the podium. Uh, and to just let those of you who are here know, there are 4 million people in this city, any one of them can come up to this podium and speak, and out of those 4 million, we have about five who come here and, on a regular basis, say the most disgusting and offensive and horrendous things from that microphone. Five out of mil, 4 million, I guess is not too bad, uh, but it's the price we all need to pay in order to have, uh, full public participation in meetings. But I just wanted, on behalf of the council, to apologize to you for having to be exposed to that.
Thank you, Mr. Krikorian. Madam Clerk, there's been a request to send item 10 forthwith. Um, let's go ahead and vote on items 11 through 14. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, those items pass, let's go ahead and vote on items 17 through 18. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Let's move on to, um, we've got a pub, two public speakers on item 15, Justine Gonzalez, followed by Christopher G.
And Madam President, as the speakers make their way forward, there is a request to send item 17 forthwith.
Without objection. Uh, Justine, are you speaking only on item 15? That's all I have you down for.
Oh, I thought I'd marked 15 and 16 on the, on the kiosk.
Okay, go ahead and speak on 15.
Okay, thank you. Uh, good morning, members of city council, uh, Justine Gonzalez, I'm a resident of, of CD 13, I live approximately .4 miles from Echo Park Lake. I'm a renter, very privileged to have lived there for almost seven years. Um, in that seven years, I've walked around the neighborhood maybe five or six days a week, um, and it's been a really, a real challenge to see that Echo Park Lake specifically, something that's so dear to my heart, um, and my daughter's heart, we've walked around that lake together so many times, um, uh, and it's become increasingly, uh, feeling unsafe. My mother's also moved into the neighborhood over the past year and has made comments, people in the neighborhood are concerned, um, there is a heavy level of compassion, we need to find, uh, solutions to ensure that Echo Park Lake remains safe and accessible to all families, uh, and, you know, I say this as a privilege, with the privilege of being a housed Angelino, I understand that there are folks with much-
Justine, let me go ahead, I apologize, you get another minute for item 16 as well.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Uh, I'm, I continue to be concerned, not only, you know, has it been a privilege to live in Echo Park, um, continue to live there and raise my daughter there, but the reality is, when we walk around the neighborhood, once the sun starts going down, Cecilia feels much less safe, uh, the cleanliness has changed, uh, she now won't walk with me, when we're walking through the neighborhood in Echo Park, whether it's Echo Park Lake proper or the surround, surrounding blocks, will not walk near the buildings, uh, because she knows there are rats in the neighborhood that walk around the buildings, and that has incredibly increased over the last two years. Uh, that was never a problem for the first five years living in the neighborhood. Um, so I think there's a connection between cleanliness, hygiene, and keeping this, uh, keeping our neighborhood safe and accessible, uh, so I, I speak in support of 15, and I'm not sure about, I can, I'm, I've said enough to also include 16, I think.
16, yeah.
Um, but I hope you all vote in favor of it, and thank you, council member, for continuing to do your diligence on this issue.
Thank you very much for being here. Christopher, you're also speaking on items 15 and 16, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so go ahead, two minutes for your two items.
Hello, my name is, uh, Christopher Geno, I was just here the other day, I didn't expect to be back here so soon, um, but, uh, Mr. O'Farrell, um, I don't know, the Illuminati lady, who by her own admission loves Trump, said that she really fully supported this, which I think should be an indication of the efficacy of this. I, I do want to say that I wholly support, uh, efforts that are made, but you, you must, you must speak to the, the residents of the unhoused residents of Echo Park Lake, or send someone to do so. It, it, a hygiene, in some sort of perverse way, I suppose you could say that it is a hygiene issue, that three people a day die of exposure in this, in the city, as relates to homelessness. It, it's not a hygiene issue, there needs to be a, 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 a longer-term solution, I think, if with the last minute, turning to 16, the, the bathrooms are a very, to me, sort of a, a, a major point of, of this thing, because the bathrooms are open already, and the unhoused people that I've spoken to have, have spoken, uh, very thankfully about the, the, the staff that already keep them, uh, hygienic or at least clean. This was, this was, this was a solution to a problem that, that didn't actually exist, because it wasn't made in concert with the people who are most vulnerable, who live there, who would be the best people to speak to, to come up with solutions together, and they asked you to, and, and, and so, I, I don't know, I, I, hopefully, in the future, you can actually reach out to the people who, who are affected by these policies, not just the, the housed people. Safety is of course an issue, but it needs to be done in a certain way with everyone, and there have been plenty of housed people in that area, I think some coming to the 1:00 PM meeting later on, who will tell you that they fully support these, these people and are not feeling unsafe. Thank you.
That concludes speakers on items 15 and 16, let's go ahead and vote on those two items, let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, members, let's move on to general public comment, Marco Juarez, are you here? Charlotte Evian? And Jacqueline Richardson? Hello, good morning. Let us help you out with the microphone so you can reach it. Are you Charlotte?
Yeah.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Can you get a little closer to the mic so we can hear you? There you go. Go ahead.
I'm here to talk about our water reservoirs. About two years ago, we had a big drought, and some of California didn't have enough water. Most people take water for granted, but not me. I heard that there are 844 million people around the world without clean or safe drinking water, and 365 million people in Africa without water alone, so I think that we should install a new water reservoir. I think we should put it next to, in Central Canyon Road, there's a big space there, when I looked on Google Maps. I'm finished.
Okay, awesome. Very well, Charlotte. Thank you very much for being here. Marco Juarez.
Good morning. Uh, my name is Marco Juarez, and I'm here again, uh, requesting help to end all the harassment, intimidation, retaliation threats. Uh, Mr. Bustiano, you asked me last Wednesday, the Bade, the INC, that's Los Angeles Housing Community Investment Department, located at 6400 Laurel Canyon Boulevard, Street 610, and that's, that's enough is enough with this abuse of power, the public servants refusing to do their job, just like we have an inspection, we have a lot of problems with the stairs, cars parked in front of the, the fire hoses, nobody does anything, that's public safety for the tenants, and who's, who's responsible blocking the, the fire hoses? We already complained many times with inspectors, they don't want to do nothing. We have a lot of problems with our windows, they say no, we don't care to replace it, that's a lot of shaking and a lot of noise, nobody wants to do nothing, many times we will complain, but they don't want to do nothing, especially that's all these investigators, uh, Joseph Placencia, April Aguilar, Evelyn Araujo, Marilena Diaz, and Letitia Bates, that's enough is enough, please do something. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Ms. Richardson. Good morning, ma'am.
There's a rumor, it's more than one rumor, that in this city, there are, half the people are from Russia, half or more are from Russia. Apparently, Sacramento and Washington are not aware of this rumor. They need to know it, they're in Washington, pointing their finger at some of the people that talks about 10 Russian people, and, and this, they say all over the United States and here, there are 50% or more Russian people, they're not all white, there are many different races. Apparently, Sacramento and Washington are not aware of this, they should be aware, because they're pointing their finger at the few people there that talk to 10 Russian people, and our problem is bigger than this room.
Madam Clerk, there are no more speakers under general public comments, let's go ahead and close general public comment for this meeting. What's before us now?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Posted and referred. Members, are there any announcements from anyone? Okay, Madam Clerk, we need a couple of minutes, we have, we have motions that have not been Seeing that there's, there aren't any announcements this morning, we all rise for adjourned motions, members. Mr. Bustiano, you have an adjourned motion, sir?
Thank you, Madam President. Yesterday, members, if you recall, we honored our youth services officers from the Los Angeles Police Department, but the one key individual who were, was the leading force behind expanding the cadet program was someone I'd like to adjourn in memory of, who we lost over the break, First Assistant Chief Earl Paycentier, retired LAPD. Um, Earl passed away on December 16th over the recess, surrounded by his family and friends, the age of 64. He unfortunately lost his battle to lung cancer. He was a dear friend of mine, a mentor of mine, and I may not be standing here today before you if it wasn't for Earl Paycentier. He was born in 1955 and grew up in my district in Harbor City, where his father worked as a cement mixer and his mother cleaned houses. He was the youngest of six children. He used to tell me stories of fishing with his dad on the docks in, in San Pedro, and first learning about the importance of giving back when he joined a local community service organization in Harbor City. He attended Nathaniel Narbonne High School, and he reminded me of that a lot of times, where he was elected class president and graduated with honors. He met his wife while attending church one Sunday, and he and Miguel McCool would go on to be married for 40 years, together they had two children, Stephen and Brian. During his 41 years with LAPD, Earl Paycentier rose through the ranks from patrol officer to First Assistant Chief, then second highest ranking post in the department. He was a pillar of LAPD and respected leader in South Los Angeles, he was credited with driving down crime by focusing on community partnerships, and was a major advocate for diversifying the police force. He was instrumental in Chief Bratton's success in reducing violence, first as Deputy Chief of South Bureau, and later as Head of Operations. And in the midst of tension, in the aftermath of the Watts uprising and Rodney King, Earl Paycentier was among the leaders who regularly met with residents, listened to their concerns, and pledged full investigations into alleged misconduct. Later in his LAPD career, um, he helped transform the department's cadet program, which provides more than 8,000 children with programs on academics and character building. Participants in the program have a 91% graduation rate from high school, with many opting to attend college and join the LAPD, and as I mentioned yesterday, members, this is a national known pro, uh, program that other law enforcement agencies come to our city to emulate. Here in this program, Earl recruited me to be one of the instructors for the cadet program. I'll never forget that opportunity and that experience, being able to mentor, uh, our young, our kids throughout the city of Los Angeles, and expose them to law enforcement, and, and show, as I mentioned here oftentimes, the heart behind the badge of, with our youth in our city. He also embraced my teen CPAP, where, where used teenagers to problem solve. Um, he said yes, he, he allowed me to come to speak as a, as a police officer to the command staff, so that the command staff can embrace using teenagers to problem solve with the police department, and now today, these teen advisory panels are in police stations. Earl retired from the LAPD in 2016 and took a position in the University of Southern California as Vice President of Civic Engagement, how appropriate. I'll miss him dearly, and as well as colleagues, his friends, the city family, and I hope that they find strength in one another during this difficult time. We lost a great leader in law enforcement, someone who cared deeply about our city and the kids that he served. Earl Paycentier, may he rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bustiano. Madam Clerk, if you can all add, all Mr. Parks.
Add on to that, Earl was a real, uh, pioneer, real, uh, inspiration in our community, especially with the youth, and he had a good sense of humor, and so he will be missed by all. Thank you.
He was a great man, his services were also very, very special. Madam Clerk, if you can add all members to this adjourned motion. Thank you, Mr. Bustiano. Mr., Mr. Wesson.
Just want to chime in, uh, for a moment on, on Earl. He was a good man, and he was a good role model. Uh, he referred to his wife as his bride, to the day that he died, she was his, his bride. He was a good father, and, um, when he was ill and really didn't tell anybody, my brother had an episode where he had to be taken to a hospital in, in, uh, Pasadena, my brother's fine, but Earl went and stayed with him, and would call me every 15 minutes until my wife was able to get to the, the hospital. That's the kind of guy that he was. He joined a force, uh, police force that was not overly friendly, uh, it was challenging for people of color to advance, and so, everything that he did- And so everything that he did, if you had to be at work at 8 o'clock, Earl was there at 7:50. If you were supposed to get off at 8, he got off at 8:15. He did everything that he could and more so that he could succeed. He was a fair man. He was a good man. He was a strict man, but he was one heck of a friend.
Thank you, Mr. Weston. Any other adjourned motions, Ms. Sadiou?
Colleagues, as you know, we all fall in love with our staffs. It's very special for us to be here as council members, as policymakers, as legislators, and we build these teams that manifest our, our shared visions and our shared goals, our shared values. And so it is with an extraordinarily heavy heart that I am here to ask that we close in the memory of Jay Cortez. All of you know him and remember him from being here on the floor. He's, was a staff member. He was the Director of Communications for me, and he was my social media coordinator. You may all recall him on the floor. He was vibrant, charismatic, charming. He and I had a particularly close relationship. We would work out together in the morning, and I loved him like a son. One of the things about him is you would see him on the floor here, and he liked to wear black shirts, dark shirts and, you know, the black suit, and then I'd walk up to him and say, "Are you just getting back from the club?" Because it's, while I, while I appreciate the, the value of that sartorial look, it wasn't really appropriate, Mr. Weston, for the floor. But, you know, he was, you know, he liked his style. In fact, we had our own playlist in the morning. We'd work, we'd work out, we'd listen to James Brown, "Get Up." That was for me. That was old school, but then we'd listen to "Return of the Mac." And of course, there was "You're Still a Young Man," "Tower of Power," "Mac the Knife." Of course, "My Way" probably his, his song that we'll remember him by. And he loved and hated Adele because she always seemed to pop up at the worst moment, and she would just be blaring right there. I'm like, "Bro, is she like following you? Is she like, you know?" So it's hard to think he's not going to be around because he was such a young man and with so much promise, smart, a great intellect, loved to read, just a pleasant person to be around. His wife is here and his daughters. He loved them with all that he was. I can say that to you. His very being was about his wife and three girls, and I was like, "Bro, that's like four women every day." I mean, you salvies are machos, man. And so it's just, it's been a rough weekend. While we collectively mourned a man who realized all his promise and lived a rich life, Kobe Bryant, a special man, one we should all aspire to be, we, in a smaller community of activists, of burners, of community people, were also ripped by the loss, the sudden and too soon loss of Jay Cortez. He joined some of my other friends now, Felipe Placencia and Marco Fireball and Ativo Lopez, warriors and champions, people who believed in social justice to their very final breath. And so I ask that we close in the memory of him, and may he rest in peace.
Mr. Weston.
When you work in this building, we all, one way or another, become family. And so we just lost an actual member of, of our family. I kind of disagree with you. I like the way that he dressed. I thought he was always appropriate. I thought he was a trendsetter, and I have respect for people that want to be who they are, and he was definitely his own, own, own person. I can remember when we were participating, I think it was with Kaiser in the step contests, who, what office could walk the most steps daily, and he always maxed out every day. We just knew that that was going to happen. He was very engaging. He was a young man that believed that radical change needed to take place in this country in order to level the playing field. Maybe that's one of the reasons why he was so engaged with Ms. Senator Sanders, and he will be missed. He was just the kind of cool person, the, the member of your family that you always anticipated would do well. And when you mention names like Placencia and Fireball and then Jay, those are three lives that were cut short before they had the opportunity to realize their potential. So I will, I will, I will miss him. Plus, he had cool hairstyles, too. He was my kind of guy. Your, your dad, your husband was a good guy.
Anyone else? On behalf of this council in the city of Los Angeles, Wendy, to you and your girls, our heartfelt condolences. Jay was a good friend, and oftentimes would chip in and stuff the rest of us to make sure we were getting our, our work done as well. And he worked really late, making sure, he served not only the constituents of City One, Mr. Sadiou, but the city of Los Angeles. So thank you for being here. Again, our condolences to you and your girls. Madam Clerk, and we can all, add all members to these, to this adjourned motion. Mr. Rue.
Thank you, Madam President. I also like to adjourn today's meeting in the memory of Lyndon Burke. Many of you know her sister, Adrienne Burke, who is also very active in the Democratic Party. And Lyndon Burke was born in Casper, Wyoming, and was second daughter of Yvonne in Creighton. And her two sisters are Diane and Adrian. Lyndon was a champion of the downtrodden, always standing up for the marginalized individuals and communities. She always spoke up for those who voice, for those whose voices were seldom heard. In her junior year of college in the 1970s, she came out as a lesbian and soon became a leader in the women's liberation community at UC Berkeley. In school, she studied sculpture and received multiple government grants that allowed her to create large public sculptures. Wanted to gain more experience, Lyndon began working in construction and worked with seven sisters, a women's construction collective. She eventually partnered with her friend Sandy to form their own construction company and moved to Portland, where she met her future wife, Jan. She traveled to Nicaragua twice with Ben Lindner, with Ben Lindner's brigade and taught a pre-apprenticeship program at Portland Community College. She also developed a passion for ceramics and built a wood fire kiln and art studio at her home. On top of that, she was a talented gardener and ended up starting the now-famous BlackBerry Bash Festival. Lyndon was a devoted mother to her two children, Jacey and Carrie, and was a Cub Scouts leader when Jacey was in elementary school. She embraced the role with gusto and deeply enjoyed spending time with her family. She is survived by her wife and partner of 33 years, Jan, and her two children. She will always be remembered for her warm sense of humor, her creativity, her incredible imagination, and for always being not just active member of our community, but also an advocate for a better and healthier world.
Thank you, Mr. Rue. Any other adjourned motions, members? Seeing that our meeting is adjourned, thank you.